I'm going to go ahead and call our election of officers meeting to order. First item up is election of officers in the position of chairman. Do I have a nomination for chairman?
I nominate him.
All right, we have a nomination. Do we have any other nominations?
We have a second on that one.
Well, I think we have one nomination, I guess, what do we do? We do the motion to... We can have multiple, but you have to close... But once you have a nomination, to close the requested... I entertain a motion to close the nominations for chairman.
I like that nomination.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to vice chairman. I'll entertain a motion, or I will accept nomination for the vice chairman position.
I nominate Joey.
We have a nomination for Joey.
I make the closing of the nominations.
I have a motion to close the nominations. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to elect our TLN representative.
Can I nominate Curtis Isbell, please?
Absolutely.
Can I second that?
And we'll all entertain a motion to close the nominations.
I nominate him.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That adjourns our election of officers meeting. I'll call to order our regular scheduled meeting. First item up is approval of our agenda as presented. I don't have any additions or deletions. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our financial report, Mr. Ray.
Everybody should have the hard copy of the financial statements, unaudited for June 2024. All go over 37 or 40 points. Should take no more than 30 minutes, so...
Right. Did you say 30 seconds? I think I heard you say 30 seconds.
So revenues came in as we budgeted, with the exception of interest revenue, we did quite well. Let's see, we have $119,000 in interest revenue. So we did well with what we put in the local government investment pool and CDs. I anticipate doing the same or more next, this year for '24, '25. The TSa funding helps us out and increase revenue compared to the former VP. And then sales tax really finished strong the last couple of months of the year. I was a little bit surprised by that, but we did well there. So all in all, there's nothing to really look at on the revenues that gives me worry for the current, for '23, '24, or for next year. Second page, or the back of your page, I had to save some trees. We ended the year with $1.1 million in surplus. A lot of that was due to some anticipated projects that we just did not complete in '23, '24. The auditorium being one. We did the abatement. And the playground at Clinton Elementary, that's still in the planning stages, but that was budgeted. So that's kind of where we ended up with a surplus, those two items. Federal projects. Well, any questions on the general purpose school fund? Federal projects, I'm not ready to close those books out. There's a lot I have to do with federal projects to close it out. Just know that the total expenses in federal projects is the $1.3 million. We'll get back in revenue. So that 1 million, the difference of $375,000 is money yet to come in to satisfy those grants. I just haven't closed them all out and booked everything for that. That's a process that takes several days. School nutrition, again, unaudited. I expect us to end with that surplus that shows about $75,000. That's a little better than what I expected. But nothing there surprises me either. In your financial statements, I've given everybody one page or summary of our cash position. It relates. This just kind of goes over where our money is. At Regions, we have $2 million. That's our operating account for payroll and payables. We have a retention account that I just left open for future construction projects. It's got 5,000. We've got cash with the city, 2.6 million. I've actually requested that to come back to us so we can... They're investing it and giving us the interest income, and we earned $52,000 on that money. But I don't think it's fair to them to be responsible. We need to be responsible for that. So now that we've got a system in place, we can do that. And then the investments in the local government investment pool, several CDs. Gets us to, total cash is 6.4 million, almost 6.5. Last year's fund balance is 5.7 million. If you take 5.7 million, add our current surplus, you'd be at 6.8 million in anticipated fund balance ending June 24. Cash flow there that I show, 720,000. We've got about $300,000, $400,000 in receivables that came in in July and August. But for cash flow at the end of June period, we improved by 723,000. So it's pretty good. We didn't have any cash crunches. We weren't ever worried about paying the bills. And so I think we're in a pretty comfortable position.
And part of the blessing this year was our ESSER money. And so ESSER III, you know, is a three-year grant. And the first two years, we really focused on the addition at South Clinton Elementary. And then some of the projects that we were going to use with the surplus didn't happen within this fiscal year. They'll hit this upcoming year. But I think just to, I guess, prepare you that I would not anticipate to see this kind next year because ESSER has gone away and all of the employees that we had moved over to ESSER are now moved back into GP. And so we'll have to absorb those additional salaries this year.
And we planned for that. I think our plan was kind of three years of ESSER, three years continuing those programs after ESSER expires, so there was no surprise. At some of my conferences, I told Kelly that they talk about the ESSER cliff. Like, hey, all of a sudden hit this cliff. No, y'all knew about it for three years, you just closed your eyes, I guess. So there was a lot of professional education and discussion about what to do. And I'm like, well, if you didn't prepare for it, there's not much you can do. So Kelly did a good job of thinking ahead, so that's good.
I love how he just gave me the credit for that. Y'all know that wasn't me.
That sure was not me. That was totally Scott Ray. I just said yes.
Any questions? I know that was a lot, and it's, again, it's not audited. And I'm still not done with what I do. I drill down the balance sheet because I think the balance sheet's important. But big picture, this is pretty good, pretty good big picture idea of where we're at.
What's the timeline for the playground?
We are moving towards getting some plans that... They've picked some equipment. They, the committee, that's Kelly and the principals, the teachers, picked some equipment. And then we have to get, lay that out on our current land and then figure out how to make up some elevation differences. So Sean and I kind of got that drilled down. And then, once we finalize the equipment, RFP it, I'd say the earliest you're looking at would be Christmas, but it could be next summer.
And part of what we're waiting on is because that's an existing parking lot for teachers, we're waiting on that back expansion of the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot to get paved. And Roger has said that there's just a backup with, you know, asphalt and when they can get Roger's group to come and do that, which is the same problem they're having at the corner, at the corner street that the city purchased.
This is a significant structures. I don't want to order it and just have it laying around somewhere. You know, it gets dropped off by the truck and things go missing until we're ready. And then I really want to plan it so there's no... We're going to do the concrete work to prepare for the installation, but I don't want them coming out to install and saying something's not right because we didn't really plan it out.
What makes it tricky is it was the most financially feasible place for us to put the playground. But as you know, right under it is rock. And so we have to get equipment that can be steel plated. And so that limited us in kind of what we could get, but then you're also dealing with the elevation. And so there's, it's been tricky just trying to find something that will work there. But I think once it is built, it's going to be a beautiful place because all kids can get there, so... Still working on it.
We're on it. And then, once it's, once we issue the RFP, it'll start moving pretty quick from there. Then we have auditorium seating.
What's the timeline on the auditorium?
Same. Somebody's got to pick some seating. I've been excommunicated from picking seating because I'll pick something colorful.
It won't be primary colors. It will not be primary colors.
I'd have some reds and blues and some greens and yellows.
Is it going to be gray?
Probably, no.
No, we may spice it up. We will give, we will let you all have some input on what you want that to look like.
And I think again, we need to plan that out because the seating that we took out was, how old?
1956.
We got our money's worth out of that, for sure.
I think the biggest thing, when we look at, we're not going to be able to choose anything that's fabric-based. That would not be good for an elementary school, so it'll have to be something that is durable for...
Probably molded plastic.
We have, I'm in touch with some experts in the area to map it out. Because we've got two different slopes in that auditorium, so we need to deal with that. It doesn't, it's not solid. Kind of goes like this and then...
But we still have the ceiling, right now the ceiling is completely out, so the ceiling and lighting have to be redone, which Scott has met with people on, and Sean. And then they'll have to be painted. So the seats, from my understanding, will be the last thing we do, correct?
Yeah, and the equipment to rent for the ceiling and the painting is very expensive. So we need to plan it so that the trades can kind of get in there, do what they need to do.
The hard plastic molding, like I said, why wouldn't we do black? That way, it kind of blends when you have performances and things like that. It kind of keeps the room dark. You can't write, you can't see writing on it. You can't see a lot of dirt and things. I would think that that would be an option.
What was that, black?
Black.
See, I never considered that.
If it's hard plastic, it's just like black chairs, you know, just really neutral.
Well, and...
Just thinking about scribbles and things like that are not showing up.
I think when you guys go somewhere to an auditorium, really think about it when you're there. I went to the auditorium in Maribor College and saw a play, and that was kind of very nice. Clayton built it, but...
Yeah, I need Clayton.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Good question, Joe. Any further questions? I'm done. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial statement for June. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kimberly Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Merle Price? Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Motion carries. Moving on to budget amendment number one.
Again, hot off the press, my memo, the budget amendment, is just our general liability, our buildings and contents and our vehicle insurance. It all went up, but primarily our buildings and contents. When I called the general manager of Tennessee Risk Management Trust, or they change their name quite often, I was a little fired up about the increase. And he kind of laughed, said, "I was wondering when you'd call, and so I'm calling." And he explained it to me, and I hemmed and hawed, and it does make, I mean, everybody knows about inflation, and the replacement cost of our buildings just went crazy high. And they reinsure, and these reinsurance companies, they're dealing with, you know, forest fires, and so their rates just went... So I don't think it's something they're keeping in-house, you know, at the Tennessee building to charge us more for insurance. I think it's, they're getting more, their reinsurance went up so high, they have to do it. So this budget amendment kind of reflects what it's going to cost us, an additional $21,000.
Is that including the new house we purchased?
That's not much. Honestly, I can't remember, the bill came in for it.
I think it was like a thousand, something like that.
Yeah, it's very minor. That's more of a liability standpoint than it is the structure of it.
Yeah.
All right. Any further questions or comments regarding budget amendment number one? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kimberly Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
The motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have a grouping of updates to our board policies that we need to approve on first and second reading. Anything that you would like to add about any of those?
Yeah, so it's August, and this is what we typically do in August, but TSBA has looked at all of the laws that were passed in the General Assembly and has revised all of the policies that need to be revised to be in compliance with the law. The majority of them are just small tweaks. The biggest ones would probably be our visitors to schools, which is the first one on your list. We are now required to have a code of conduct for visitors at schools. So we worked with Chris McCarty over the summer and got that created. And so that is posted on the entrance of every school. It is on our website, it's in our handbook, and we've also posted on social media. So visitors will be held to that visitor's code of conduct for the safety and security of students and staff members. The one on the bottom of the page, the use of artificial intelligence. That is a new one, but obviously, as we know, that AI is coming on the scene. We were required by state law to have a new policy to address AI. Basically, all that says is we have to vet the AI programs that we allow children to have access to. So we've developed a procedure to where any AI programs have to be vetted through our technology department. And then we have to communicate all the AI programs that we use to parents. So we are doing that on the website and also in our handbook. The only two that we are doing right now is Canva, Canva, which is mainly used by teachers, but it's a graphic organizer creator. And the second one is Magic School, which we purchased this year that teachers will mainly be using to help with lesson plans and those kinds of things. But we have those two programs posted on our website, so we are in compliance with that law. And then the last one on page two is the opioid antagonist. We now have Narcan at each one of the schools, and we are very thankful to ASAP, our good partners who helped us acquire those to be held at each school. Those are locked up in the nurse's office, so kids don't have access to that. But that would just be in the event that we would need that, with parents or visitors that may be in the school. I really hope that we would never have to use that with a child. But those are the big changes. Obviously, my voice is giving me a hard time tonight. The rest of them are just small tweaks, but happy to answer any questions.
And with the Narcan, will we, we need to schedule times to have those as they go and expire to...
We do, and we actually have partnered with Dr. Abby Blackman with Blackman Pediatrics. She is serving as our kind of on-call medical director. And so she actually wrote the prescriptions for our EpiPen, for our Narcan, and for our Albuterol that we have every year. And so we're working with Jim McBride to get the prescriptions for that. But we partner with ASAP because they were able to give that to us for free. So we have that, but we also have the prescription from Dr. Blackman that we have permission to have those on campus. And we're going to let the nurses take care of those.
All right. Any further questions or comments regarding our revised school board policies?
I know it was riveting reading for everyone.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our school board policies as presented on first and second reading. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to reports from principals.
All right, let's start with Clinton Elementary. Ms. Sharp, you want to head up? Because she spent her entire summer at the beach.
I did, I'm losing my tan.
So now you're back to reality.
Yes, yes, it was a good summer. So we did have a successful open house last week, and this week has been so calm. All the kids seem happy and calm, all the teachers seem happy and calm. It seemed like a short summer, but it's so nice to be back, and I can feel that energy throughout the building. So that's been nice. I want to thank AdFac for donating backpacks and supplies. So we almost had close to 100. And it's neat to see the kids come in and they get to shop for their backpacks and their supplies. And the parents really depend on that, so we just wanted to say thank you to them. And then also to Amy Dodson at Next Home Clint Valley. She provided breakfast for our staff, just all by herself, but that was very nice for her to welcome us back to school and think of us as well. So we have a lot of staff changes this year, and some of our staff moved to new grade levels. We don't really have any new staff except for Ellie Martin, who was Ellie Shaw last year, and she filled in for Kaylee Hout. But in kindergarten this year, we have Dominique Chitwood and Brandy Pore, they moved. Patty Beetz and Amanda McAmis are now teaching second grade. Ashley Brock moved to third grade. We have a new CDC, and it's Joe French, and he was a TA for us last year. And he has moved into that position. He's doing job embedded right now. And then we have an assistant that moved from North Clinton in CDC, and that's Wendy Edwards. And she has been amazing. She also has her degree now, and she's just going to move into Olivia's position when she goes on leave. Brandy Warwick is a new teaching assistant. She was a sub for us last year, and she has been invaluable already. And then we also have Alex Billings full-time, and she will do anything and everything, loves to stay busy. So all great additions and changes this year. I wanted to mention that I'm very proud of our new cafeteria company that we have. The kids have loved the food. A lot of the staff ate, they've been eating lunch in there. I went and got lunch in there today, and I'm kind of a tough sell on the cafeteria food because I feel like a lot of our kids, that's the only time they get to eat. And it was actually very, very good food, so I wanted to brag on how hard they've worked to make that change over. We'll be completing our school safety audit with David Massengill on the 20th from Homeland Security. So he's just going to walk through our emergency plan and make sure that we have what we need, and if we don't, how we can attain those things. School pictures for us will be on August the 20th, and we will have our first PTCC meeting on the 27th at 3:15. So thank you. And it's good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Ms. Ryle?
We're back.
She's back.
I also want to say thank you to AdFac for providing backpacks and school supplies. They provide pretty much anything for all of our students, pre-K through fifth grade. So we're really thankful to them and our students who maybe have purchased something, you know, a backpack that, from home, that might have been okay. They prefer their AdFac backpacks. They like the fashion of them a whole lot better, so they're very proud of those. I also want to say thank you to an anonymous donor, to our library. We had a generous donation this week to our school library. And after much flurry of enrollment with pre-K students, we are now at currently 194 students at Clinton Elementary. We generally run between like 180 to 185, but we are up to the same two pre-K, but we have two kindergarten, two first grade, and two second grades this year. So we are packed, and we keep getting calls all week saying, "Well, you're going to get another third grader. Here's another fourth grader, here's two fifth graders." So we're sweating a little bit. We're hoping that we're not going to run out of desks or anything. But we're really busting at the seams, but everything is very calm and very happy, and lots of kids are already learning. Our two new certified teachers, we have a new second grade teacher, Skylah Kurington, and she is absolutely precious. I have a hard time telling the difference between her and the students because she's just a little bitty petite thing, but she absolutely is precious and loves those kids. And then we have our new fifth grade teacher, Emily Moore, and she's just come in with this community spirit, and the kids already feel like they belong to a classroom community in her room. And then we gained a TA that was previously at South Clinton Elementary, Carrie Eastgate. And we're also sharing Caroline Wilson as our guidance counselor and guidance class teacher, alternating nine weeks between North Clinton and South Clinton. Our fall pictures are on the 19th of August, and we are having our school's security assessment with Mr. David Massengill on the 22nd of this month.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Ryle.
Thank you.
Ms. Bostel, she's coming for you. She's about to catch up with your South Clinton enrollment. So come on up, Ms. Bostel.
That's a good thing, though.
That's a good thing, that's right.
That's a great thing. So we had our open house on August 3rd as well, and it was very successful, probably the most participation that I've seen. I feel like almost every kid showed up to open house. So that was a great way to start off the new school year. I feel like it takes away those first day jitters when they can come and meet their teacher right before school starts. I have several new staff members this year. So in kindergarten, I have Jada Sliger, very sweet. I can't wait for you all to meet all of our new staff members. Maddie Grace Hensley is going to be one of our new first grade teachers. Kaylin Gibson is in third grade. And we have a new special ed teacher, Taylor Collinberg. And a couple of staff changes. So Melissa Jay, that was formerly our special education teacher, has moved to first grade, and she's very excited about her new role. Courtney Case, who was a first grade teacher, has moved to fourth. And Drews Overton is joining us at South Clinton. She was formerly at North Clinton, I'm so sorry, Monica. But she's joining us as our speech and language pathologist. And Caroline Wilson, we are also going to be sharing her as our school counselor, and we're very excited to have her as well. So I think she's got some great plans for our kiddos. We are completing our school's safety audit with David Massengill, who's a special agent from Office of Homeland Security, on Friday, August 23rd. But the good news is, I heard the word audit, and I immediately was a little nervous about it, but we met with him, and I think it's going to be a great thing. I think we're going to get some good information about our school and how to keep our kids safe. So it's a little less scary now. I want to say thank you to AdFac for donating close to 80 backpacks full of supplies for our kids. And I especially want to thank Becky Hook that works with AdFac. She works really hard to make that special for the kids. And she, at our school at least, did not replicate a single backpack so that no two kids in the school would have the same backpack, at least if they had gotten it from AdFac, because she wants every kid to have their own backpack. So I want to thank them. They are so good to us every year, and our kids and our families are so grateful for it. And it is very fun watching them come in and pick their backpacks out. And last but not least, we are starting off the year with our first Fun Friday tomorrow. So we're going to get all of our kids in their communities, and we're going to have some fun and do some getting to know you activities, and we might dance a little bit.
Of course you're going to dance.
Yes.
Of course you are.
It's going to be a great Friday.
So the community names stay the same, or will they pick their own again?
They stay the same.
Okay.
And the kids stay in the same communities, but then we add kindergartners and as we get new students... They stay the same, and the kids stay in the same communities, but then we add kindergartners, and as we get new students, we place them, so they're gonna be a little bit different, but.
And so just for the record, what was the music for the first day of school that you played?
Oh, gosh. Um, what did I play? It was probably Taylor Swift, just to be honest. I mean, you can't go wrong with Taylor Swift.
So the boombox is outside every morning, and there's just, it's a wild party.
Karen was there, what did I, oh, um, celebration.
Celebration, cool in the game.
That was it, yes. There you go. That was my first song I played.
Very good. That concludes our principal reports.
All right. Other items, the Fall District meeting will be coming up on Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth. And we will move on into the Director's Report.
Okay, I'm gonna try to hold my voice steady and make it through the Director Report, but you all have a copy of some updates in front of you. Obviously, Clinton City Schools is off to a great start. Our sneak peek was held last Wednesday, and students' first day was Friday. And honestly, it, it always amazes me, if you were to walk down any of our hallways right now, it is as if school has been in session for nine weeks. I mean, the, the kids know the routines, you see teachers up, high-quality instruction is happening. So we definitely are not wasting a single minute in Clinton City Schools getting started. Um, enrollment is still settling. We're still trying to find where a few children have gone, and, um, every day we are enrolling multiple children at all three schools. But as of today, our current K through six enrollment is nine hundred and thirty-four. That is kindergarten through sixth, not including pre-K. And that's about where we've hovered for the past couple of years, so I don't, don't anticipate a huge jump this year. I think we're gonna hold pretty steady from what we have seen so far. Uh, we are receiving positive reviews about our cafeteria vendor, SFE. It has been such a joy today. They served pizza, and it was an actual round pizza that was fresh out of the oven. And as I walked around talking to kids, if they liked it, they all loved it, and they had learned that they could self-serve themselves some pineapple. And so they were putting the pineapple on the pizza and making their own Hawaiian pizza, and they thought it was fabulous. And spoke to another teacher who had gotten a meatball sub earlier in the week and was talking about how delicious it was. And so we are definitely seeing Scott's working out a few just general, you know, beginning-of-the-year, small kinks with them, but definitely we are pleased the food is fresh. We're getting lots of positive feedback from the kids, and when Jenna says that she is a hard sell, she means that she is a hard sell. So when I got a text complimenting on the food today from Jenna, that means, that means a lot. So, um, SFE is going good. Um, with that, we move to a new cafeteria online student portal called Meal Magic. So we've tried to, we've sent out the directions and put it on social media. Parents can set up an account for their child, where they can deposit meal funds and track all the purchases made in the cafeteria. Um, any parent that had a remaining balance on the former My School account, which is the former program that we used, it is automatically transferred over into Meal Magic. So no parents lost any money. It should've transferred over, and then we just continue. Uh, Blaze activities are already gearing up for the school year. So cross-country, dance, basketball, and cheer are what is on the slate for the next month. So you've probably seen on social media where we're advertising either the first practice or tryouts, or encouraging kids to get involved in those activities. Um, next month will be a big month for us. As you know, we have started letting teachers get their head above water, and we don't ask them to come to the board meeting in August. They will be here in September, so all of the lovely people's names that you heard from the principals, you'll get to see them in action in person, um, next, next month. But also Kathy Brown will be with us to officially award the Otto Brown Scholarship. We have actually not had anyone take advantage of those in the past few years, but we have three this year. So Taylor Bailey, who teaches fourth grade at Clinton Elementary School, our very own Abby Kidwell, Assistant Principal at Clinton Elementary School, and Kelly Atkins, who is a certified intervention teacher at Clinton Elementary School, have received that scholarship, and they are going to get their, um, their literacy specialist endorsement at the University of Tennessee. So this is certainly gonna help our knowledge and content knowledge and instructional practices, and so we're excited that we're gonna tap into them once they get this degree, and although three people are learning it, by the time all is said and done, it should have a ripple effect across all three schools. Then I wanted to tell you about a new system that we have bought that is so exciting, and Monica could probably tell you more about it than me, but it's a, it's a system called Translate Live. And right now, we are over thirty ESL children in Clinton City Schools. And if you recall, three years ago, we were at zero. And so it is just, and it is not all from one place. We probably have a good eight to ten languages represented. And so, you know, that has to be such a scary feeling when you walk in as a parent and we can't understand what you're saying, and and you don't understand what we're saying, and you're trying to enroll your child. And so this is a neat system that it almost looks like two iPads are sitting like with each other. And it has over like, it has several hundred different languages on it. But you just set it up, and we sit on one side and they sit on another. We pick the language, and then we speak in English, and it translates it into their language on their side. It is written, and it's also spoken to them, and so it has allowed us. Monica, do you wanna talk just a minute about that?
We just used it a couple of times today with a, a student that was, uh, trying to register for kindergarten, and then we had another student that was previously with us um, last year, and the mother speaks just enough to be dangerous. She, she, she doesn't feel confident in what she's saying, and we don't always feel confident that she understands us. So we had a conversation on that today, and she looked at me and she went, "Nice."
So we just want our parents to feel welcome when they come. I mean, that's what we pride ourselves in. When they walk into central office, we are the first face. You know, we, we want to take care of them, we want them to feel welcome, we want to develop a personal relationship with them, and, you know, when you got that language barrier, it makes it harder. And so it has been neat to see. We're still learning how to use it, um, but that sure does beat us trying to use the Google Translate with our phones. And so, uh, we're gonna continue to learn about that, but we're excited about that. So we have one in central office, and then we have three, so one in each school. And if we get some success and get some comfort with it, we plan to purchase some more for the ESL teachers and for classroom teachers who have that non-English-speaking child that walks into their room, and they're trying to function throughout the day. So we plan to expand that. Then I wanted to touch quickly, it's on my report, about the Homeland Security audits that you heard the principals talk about. David Massengill is our Homeland Security Agent that works with all three school systems in Anderson County, and this was part of Bill Lee's initiative after Covenant shooting to provide each county with their own Homeland Security Agent, just specifically focused on school safety. So they have implemented a program where, once every three years, Homeland Security will come and do a Safe Schools Audit of all the schools. Um, and it's not, like you said, it's not a scary thing. It is basically just getting a set of fresh eyes, looking at things that we have put into place and some weak spots and things that we can tweak, and and then we plan to take this feedback and use our public school safety money that we get from the state to help address those items. And so that is gonna happen at all three schools, so we will, the principal will be involved in that, the SRO, um, Scott Johnson, and, um, and Sean with our facilities will all be involved in those audits. If there's something facility that needs to be corrected, obviously Sean will take care of that. Um, Karen, actually, who I'm gonna introduce you to in just a second, she actually did this audit at Fairview last year and promised us it was not a scary thing. It is a very helpful, it is a very helpful thing. So that leads me into my very last announcement, which I'm so super proud to announce. But, um, you all been hearing me talk about this, Karen Couples, now since about fall or the first of the year, and so now she's here, and she is a part of us, and, um, she has put on, she, I'm gonna let her just, if you don't care, I'm gonna let you kinda tell a little bit about yourself. I know I'm putting you on the spot. But I will tell you, as she's walking up here, the minute that she has walked into central office, I feel like that she has been a part of us forever. It's like we have not missed a beat. Her core beliefs, her core philosophy, her decision-making process fits, it just aligns so nicely to Clinton City Schools. And as she will tell you, she started her career in Clinton City Schools, and so now she has come back home. So Karen, introduce yourself to these fine people.
I will. I didn't see myself on the agenda, so I thought I was getting out of it, but. So I feel like I know most of you, but for those of you, if you don't know me, my name is Karen Couples. Uh, this is my thirty-second year in education. Uh, I did a few years at Pickett County while my husband was on that six-year college athlete, like, playing at Tennessee Tech, playing basketball. Curtis, don't tell him I said that. Um, and so I taught two years at Pickett County, came here, taught at South Clinton fourth grade for twelve years, and then I went to Anderson County to be in the admin role. And I've been principal for seventeen years, fifteen at Fairview. Let me tell you, Clinton City is such a great school system. I've known, always known it, but your leaders, leaders, leaders at central office, all the way, it is a phenomenal school system, and I'm just so lucky, really, and blessed to be here. Uh, I do, I agree with Kelly. I feel like we have just meshed from the beginning. We are all type A personalities, and we're da, 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 da. And it's great, and we love kids, and we have kids at the forefront of all of our decisions, as they do. And being in the principal world, uh, for most of my career, um, principal is a really tough job. All the jobs are tough, but I feel like, and you have to have really good leaders in your schools to make the magic happen, and you have great leaders here. And it starts from the top down, and Kelly and the staff, I, I can't say enough. I'm just blessed to be here. Um, and I, I think, I mean, I can go on and on, um, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to, to take them. Does anybody have any questions?
Would you like to tell them the only one thing that we told you you were not allowed to do?
Wear maverick. She said I can wear my Anderson County maverick. I know.
Nor can you collaborate too much with Curtis when these meetings are going on.
So I had a hard time, because we were ordering, uh, gear at our kickoff, and it all had big Cs on it, and like, what Joey's wearing, and I love, I'm, I'm a Clinton person now, but Clinton dragon, I don't know. I guess I can meet in the middle somewhere. But I, I grew up here, went to Anderson County, Norris, I'm a home girl, hometown girl. And my girls went to Anderson County, but I love me some Clinton, too. Uh, but yeah, she said I can wear.
So she, you can't wear your Clinton dragon. Her first week here, she got bombarded with like every single Blaze t-shirt that I could find in my, in my closet, and she has been wearing them.
I have, in fact, I just had my second, we just had our second grandbaby, and to the hospital, I wanted the, I wanted the Clinton blaze in my pictures with my second new grandbaby, so, thank you for making me feel so welcome. Thanks.
So, so that, that is our Karen, and she is gonna be a great addition, and she told us that, um, as in her principal time, she has calculated that she probably has sat through approximately seven thousand IEP meetings. And, uh, Fairview has some pretty intense, uh, pretty intensely supportive programs, and so there's not gonna be a situation that comes her way that she has not dealt with in the past seventeen years. So her expertise and compassion for kids, but she carries that high expectations, and, and it is all about the kids. So we're gonna see her do great things with our spin program. So that concludes my report. Any questions for me?
Anything further? Karen, welcome to Clinton City Schools. We have been waiting for you, and we are so honored that you are here. All right. Well, with nothing else to come before the board, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.